All right, we're ready to open the hearing. We're citing our RGFAs for 24 Sylvan Road. Hopefully, we can do this at a happy hour. We're praying that we can. So Jay, you're the one doing the presentation.
Yes, I'll start.
Okay. Well, the lights go out. The lights actually do go out. Yes?
Midnight.
What time did it go out?
Midnight.
Midnight, all right, so we have a finite end to this meeting.
All right, Jay, talk fast.
Will do. So I'll go over there, I think, very quick. Just want to give you a general idea of this neighborhood before. This is the 2013 mass GIS of the neighborhood. Here's 24 Sylvan Lane. Here's the existing house, the pool, the driveway area. As you know, we're basically realigning the house to go this way with the open up the backyard to take some trees down through there. I just wanted to show that basically the part of the reason why the homeowner has bought this into this neighborhood was, you know, a lot of this area is very built out and like most of the yards in the area have lawn areas, pools, small courts, that kind of stuff. So it's not unheard of to have a decent little backyard for a place like this. Since the time that we've been the sidewalk, we've made some major reductions to the project site, so I just want to go through quick. I know I brought this up at the sidewalk. So this is the actual, the, it is.
It's the first here?
First up, yeah. So this is the neighborhood locus. We actually have 18 residential butters within 300 feet of the property. The average RGF for all the butters is just over 5,300 square feet. It's 5,329 square feet. The direct to butters to the project site is 5,754 square feet. But we do actually have, because of Beaver Road, you know, we do have some smaller houses on the side. So if we were to just look at the butters going 300 feet that are on Sylvan Lane alone, that our average RGF is just over $6,000, $6,650 square feet. Originally, when we did the original submission, we were at 88.25. Right now, with the reductions we've done to the house, it's at 82.95. So it's about a 600 square reduction. These are the existing conditions. So what we have is existing house, driveway, front door garage. It's an existing five-bedroom house, five-bedroom septic in the front yard, wetland area along the side, which we actually have approved order of conditions from the Conservation Commission, 25-foot and 100-foot buffer, 25-foot water zone, 100-foot buffer zone. The existing house has a pool in the back, little fence area, and then there's this weird little excavated area in the back that was, for some reason, whoever originally owned the house did some great excavations back there, but decided not to do any more work.
Jay, help me get the existing property. I was not.
Oh, sorry. The existing house or the property?
Yeah, the existing house, sorry.
The existing house is just over $4,000, $4,000 square. The lot itself is 2.37 acres. Before I show you the full segment, this is a mock-up, so you can see what we did from the sidewalk. This is what we have right now, and I'll show you that plan. I just want to show you kind of how everything overlaid, so the backyard basically stayed the same. And then what we did is, from what we had talked about on the sidewalk, we had the side low garage with the driveway coming all the way over. The new garage sits here with the basically front door through that section. We got rid of this entire section through here. So we were able to remove the wall, remove up, basically pull all that, pull the driveway out, and then pull all the grades up. When we did that, we ended up with this. So we brought the actual limit of work in on that left side by 23 feet. We brought the limit of work on the, by taking that driveway and changing over here, we were no longer touching each side yard setback. So we were able to actually pull the house along this way, we were able to pull the limit of work along that side another nine. So altogether, we brought a limit of work of 32 feet between the two sides. The front yard itself stays the same as we had originally. We're saving all the existing vegetation with the exception of all the invasive species that are on the end of the growth that's underneath. We're taking now three trees alone to replace the septic system. So as I mentioned, it's an existing five-bedroom house, we're doing a five-bedroom septic system, so it's just a repair for that. Over here, we can see that we're actually doing a 3:1 grading through here to get down as fast as possible to the existing grade. We were able to save a significant amount of trees along these edges. Again, Karen get into that, but I think it's long, we saved about 18 to 20 trees from the original sidewalk. We left the rear yard basically as-is. I looked at trying to drop the grade, as you mentioned, out the sidewalk. I couldn't because of the groundwater, because of the discharge basin was already at 2 feet to groundwater, so I couldn't go any deeper. And then what we have here is for the, overall, what we've done is, we actually had, for the original submission, we had about 15,700 square feet of impervious area. Right now, we're proposing 13,540, so we took out 2100 square feet of impervious area. So now we dropped our GFA, we dropped impervious area, reduced the disturbance, and then we also saved another 18 to 20 trees.
No. Just looking at it. This is, just to illustrate, this was the original plan that we showed on the sidewalk. As Jay was saying, the driveway is over here, there's a retaining wall here, parking court, those were put in the pool, and the front lawn area. Since this time, we moved this wall, pulled the house in, and then this is what we've So we pulled the house in, it allowed us to increase the buffer on either side, so all of these buffers, at the narrowest point, the buffers are at 45 feet with the existing And so that's pulled this way back in here. We're keeping that hedge of hemlocks over there, so it's a pretty solid wall. There's like a solid green wall here. And then around the new features that we're putting in, we've increased the screen while keeping the existing woodlands up there. By removing this wall, this is a pretty slumbed area, so we're planting it with some mix of deciduous and evergreen shrubs that are native and wetland plant. So there's spice bush, there's, oh, it's just a lot, sorry. Right, so the plants that are on here are native and wetland plants because there's a wetland over here. Screening from the garages, some plants in the front, some trees in the front for scale, so there's some evergreens here that helps to screen this under the garage. Then we're adding some red maples here, some birches, some sugar maples in here, so when we come in the garage, even though we're removing some trees, we're going to put in some other larger trees that are going to keep up the scale of the woodland and also add some more color that, it's just an open color board, so add some color there. And then there's some understory shrubs that are in front of the hemlocks to bring scale down, and then some addismane up in there.
Does it have a straight shot up this driveway right into that garage? Have you thought of having something?
Well, this is where the septic is. Yeah, so by, you know, before the driveway, the old ones, you missed the sidewalk, but the old driveway did the same kind of thing, but it went all the way across and back here. So we thought that by shortening the driveway and adding some plants here and here to help pinch it a little bit, but the driveway is in the location, pretty much in the location of the existing driveways, or the curb cut isn't moving, and it's kind of what it does now. And then in the front, I didn't mention this, but in the front, this area has a lot of invasives that we're going to remove, but we're planting understory shrubs in there, mountain laurels and shays and some things that are going to be some bigger plants to go in to break that.
Are you sure that if you actually drew where the septic was, there wouldn't be some places around it that you could put some trees? Look at that, my, and the trees that you have relatively close on the bottom, you know, how close are these trees that you're planting to that versus putting some up there?
Some up in here?
Right.
It's pretty close to the driveway, but Jay, there's...
Yeah, so here's the utilities coming through there, so there's a, this is about, it's about 10 feet right there, and so we have the utilities coming up. We do have a recharge basin under the driveway. You might be able to...
You might be able to pull this out a little, or maybe...
Yeah.
It's a little bit...
You might be down there.
Yeah, so we might swing that up and tighten up that and...
Right.
That's just it, it's just that straight shot.
Yeah.
And you want to just review the trees being removed in this version versus the prior version?
So in the, in the original version, we had, we were removing 99 trees, it seems like 200, plus or minus 267 trees on the lot.
Just show the general area where they were removed.
So there are, so, there were some removed over here that are not going to be removed anymore. There were some removed over in here that are not going to be removed anymore. And then we tightened it up, so we had 99 trees and removed, and now we have 81. And then, then 40 or so that are, that are declining hazardous trees. Lighting? Oh, lighting. So lighting, not only did we reduce the size of the house and the driveway, we also reduced the luminance. So the luminance were at like 20, 21, it's now at 14, 40. So I took out, there had been a path over here, so those lights are gone. We removed the sun porch, the screen porch, so those lights are gone, and there are fewer lights in the front of the steps. So we reduced the lighting, and then, these are the fixtures, and all our sky. So there's one post lamp, there's, these guys are on the garage, there's two lights on the garage, sorry, should be higher, some sponsors, and...
And your fixture where it's forged?
And there's a hang fixture, which shows...
Yeah, okay. Good. Parking texture?
Is that just...
If you have this presentation, I'd give a suggestion. We're not going to make a vote on the question, so the suggestion is, we will send this presentation for the next presentation. We have 36 questions, and we're not going to... We have these decisions, and we're not going to, I guess, issue. We have a few decisions for this one, 36 questions.
October 27.
But I think we can't, I think it's special. Sorry, go ahead.
Okay. So I think the, just sort of the plan for a second, but a lot of the changes were driven by the, by the plan, from repositioning this garage from over here to the front, which dramatically reduced the width of the overall presentation of the house. It scaled down a lot of the factors on the garage, there was a stair tower in previous design, and that allowed us to protect a lot of the trees and just...
So sorry, we just look at a house that was way out exactly like...
Oh, yeah.
Different study.
So, so the materials have stayed the same. Through a lot of the presentation of the house, the RGF did get reduced from approximately 8,800 down to 82.95. Some of that came out, the screen porch was eliminated off the back of the house, which helped with the load count as well as the square footage and the overall length into the backyard. And then just through this modification of the garage area, the stair tower reduction and all of that, that's where the second floor plan change produced a lot of the overall square footage. So this is the street elevation, it's a shingle, shingle home with shingle corners, painted white trim on these shower boxes, the fascia floors, the rail floors. There's metal roof elements on the low areas and composition, architectural composition on the body of the house. Stone veneer, which is the sterling stone veneer with blue stone sort of accent turns for the stairs, and then simulated top lits of bronze with colored aluminum gutter and the histrion. So the entry door, the garage door, stayed natural. So a very kind of natural material palette, semi-transparent stain on the shingles and some sort of material like that. The other change I think that's happened in the front, we did actually reduce the overall height by two tenths of a foot. Someone had to do with the grade transition, since the garage didn't have to get around to the back side, we were able to position that garage closer to the finish floor, eliminate that stone wall and elevation in the house.
Is there a generator for this?
There is. So now with the new design, the AC units and the generator on the backside. So there's the generator and there's the AC units. The generator has a solid wood fence, 5 feet off of it, and it has sound blankets, because right now it's 53 feet or 52 feet or so off the...
Or less.
Yeah, off the property line. So it's a, it's a 36 kilowatt quiet source, so that puts out 64 decibels. From the, from that Excel sheet that Joe had given me back, when you guys had the research done for the generators, it puts out like about 55 decibels, 55 decibels at the property line. So you have to add the wood fence and the sound blanket. The sound blanket's about 27 decibels. So it puts us away in the 400.
Good. Okay. Is it going to be a lawn sprinkler system? Where are you going to get the water? I'm serious.
Yeah. I don't know. What is that? You can do an irrigation.
Yeah. Because that's our standard requirement.
Because the way the septic in the front, irrigation will go over there.
Just do that one, fall through the cracks.
Did you do that for Oakdale? Or didn't you?
Wait, I don't think I've got a, have a sprinkler system.
It's a condition of approval in Oakdale.
Um, okay. Comments from the board, questions from the board?
I'd just like to commend you for the garage, a huge improvement.
I assume there are no comments from either of you guys. Stormwater's fine, landscaping is an improvement, so. Any comments from the audience at all? Yes?
Hi, I'm a neighbor, Michelle Bettes. May I approach?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll make it quick. I'm sorry, it's past my bedtime as well. We are a buddy neighbors, we're at 36 Sylvan Lane. This is our current, I'll just put it up in this, our current pictures of where we live. And at the time that the Shays presented the proposal to us, they didn't have a landscape plan as detailed as it is now. So I was able to talk to Mrs. Shea about some of the things that took place. Do you mind if I use this?
Oh, yeah.
No, it's kind of broken. Let's show it this way. I'll just walk in here. This is, this is my home here. This is a satellite spot, so that has no bearing. And this is the current house that we're talking about, and these are the stretch of trees.
Stand the sun please.
I'm sorry, the stretch of trees that will, I think a great deal of them will be taken out. Do you know how many will be taken out between their house and our house here? You said 81 total. That's right here, we're this house right here.
So then, on the original, so on the original...
I don't know, whatever one you're proposing now.
These, these trees are all coming out, so the only thing, the only trees that are coming out, there's one of this out here, and there's a couple up in the front, so there's your house here. So that entire existing hedge is staying.
So how many here is coming out? None?
In that, in that hedge area where the hemlocks are?
They're evergreens, yeah.
Yeah, from 40, from 45 feet inside of that property line, all the trees that are coming out are ones that are hazards, and there's like two.
Okay, so what can I expect to, and how about here with the sport court and tennis pool, the pool is gone. So, go on, raise that question, it's, it's okay. So that's this area here.
Right. So in this, in this area here that you just talked about, this is 45 feet wide here, 50 feet wide here, and your house is here, and the lawn comes up to that. There's one, two, three, four house, four trees coming out in there beyond the hemlock hedge.
Mm-hmm.
And then in the back out here, there's coming from your, from your direction, there's one, two, three coming out, that would come between you and the pool. And then we're adding some trees in here, and they're 14 feet tall, 14 feet tall.
The only reason I would like to know is this is our patio here, you can see one of the pictures, and so this is what we will be facing, will be the, you can kind of see the tape in there, is that most of this, and people talk about not wanting shade, we want shade, will all be gone back here, this will sort of be open, you see some of the trees that are marked back there. It might have changed by now, I'm not sure. We love our backyard, it's an oasis for us, it's our cottage, that's been one of the reasons we moved to Weston. So I guess our only request as a neighbor and as a resident of Weston is that we maintain the privacy and the integrity of, if possible, of the look of our backyard, perhaps planting of mature vegetation and trees, so we can't wait 10 years or so to enjoy it again. And also, it would provide privacy for you as well, because like we said, we sit there to...
Where are you standing? I took this photograph.
No, my backyard.
No, I know it's your backyard. Where are you, where are you?
Like, point at this thing where you're standing.
Okay, let me go back to here.
Or pin.
It's in the shade, you can't see, it's right here.
Just tell her it's a change.
That's our patio.
And if you could, if you could explain where that orange tape is.
So that orange tape was actually from the original sidewalk, which...
It's still there.
Yeah, that's the, because we haven't, it hasn't come down, so the, as we had mentioned...
Yeah, you can sort of see it run back through there.
Right.
It does change the...
So this originally pushed into this section here, so this all got pulled back, initial nine, another nine feet, so we can save that entire, all that vegetation on that side. There's some additional trees that are being saved on the upgrading side of that, or the west side of it. The, I understand what you're talking about, about wanting to keep, keep your, this area so you actually have some screening and basic privacy in the back. The part of our issue though was also, your yard is cleared, is almost cleared up to the property line, and so you're enjoying the buffer that we're providing right now. So we are providing about a 40 to 45 foot buffer along this edge, as Karen had mentioned, where it's about the same as we come back through the side over here. There's some trees coming down, but those are all getting supplanted with new evergreens. So our intention is to try to keep it as private, that's why when we were doing the sidewalk, we saw that giant hedge of trees, we said we got to, we got to keep that, because we want to keep it private there.
I think it's our goal to maintain as much privacy as possible, but it is tough when everyone's sort of cleared to the property line, and we're trying to stay well within our setbacks and add additional plantings, because we do want to maintain that privacy, but it's all happening on our property.
And so all these trees are on their property, not the butters' property?
Yeah, it's the, right now you can actually see this, unfortunately, you don't see it in there, but the, the electric panel for her, for 36 Sylvan is literally on the property line, so it's right on the edge of the lawn. So it's the, that lawn basically comes in with a few, few of the property. No, but we had, her intention is the same as ours, like we, everybody wants privacy, so that's why we keep, that's why we expanded this buffer.
And I think the other comment that I have is that with the construction and the taking down of the trees, if some consideration can be taken, that no root damage is, has with the existing trees that are there, because I'm sure the bombcats are going to come in, and there's a lot of work that needs to be done, that the roots are protected on these existing trees, because as you say, some are in a tendered position, and also that there's no erosion with, or that there's a change in the grade, I'm not sure, with the 81 trees that are maintained, like something's got to give there, so I just want to make sure that anything isn't on.
Yeah, so what we did is, when we did the actual drainage analysis, that was part of the analysis was towards your property. But yeah, we actually have, on the downgrading side of all our disturbance, we have erosion control, the actual trees, so this limit of work's going to be installed, it's going to be a fence that goes up, so nothing can get touched on that side, so nothing will be able to even park, to go into any of the root systems. The trees inside, the limit of work, are all going to be fenced, so same thing's going to happen, they're all going to be protected.
And I can't speak for our yard, how it was done before, we've just been here for three years, so whatever was approved before was probably approved in here, so good luck.
Actually, it wasn't.
Can I have a thing before?
So, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good job.
You can have the pictures. I got to go home to bed. Thank you, good luck.
Can I just ask one more question? Where is the, where is the fence around the pool?
It's actually right around the pool, it's right on, right on the poker.
Oh, okay. All right. Good. Any other comments from the, yes?
Hi, I'm in the neighborhood, I just walked down the street at 55 Ellen Freeman Road, and I'm just wondering, as we're all stewards of this woodland of ours, you know, for our children and our children's children, what percentage of the woodland is going to be destroyed in, in this plan?
So we have, there's about 267 trees on the site, plus or minus a couple trees. I think 81 are coming down, but about 40 of those are hazardous trees, so even if the existing house was never coming down, those are 40 trees we don't want to take down because they're all leaning and they're all dead. So if we were to talk about just the 40 trees out of the, out of 240 or so, you're looking at basically what, an eighth?
Although even the 40 that you're, just by virtue of removing them, it's removing habitat for animals, so it's still actually the 80 trees out of what, so it's like a quarter of the woodlands being, just being damaged.
Yeah, we're adding.
They're putting back 55. So they're, they're taking out 80, 40 of which are, are dead or dying, and they're putting back 55 of healthy ones.
Okay.
So, they're going to be smaller, but they'll, they'll grow up.
Yeah.
And they did, I mean, as a result of the comments that we made, they did manage to save 20 that were going to be cut down.
It's more like the death by a thousand cuts theory for the woodland and the town, yeah.
No, but as I look at this on Google Maps, you can see that Sylvan Lane is a lot less Sylvan, all the buildings that's been gone out there.
Yeah, it's like, it's like weeping sores now.
Yes, but I think it's been quite a while, and a lot of these houses never did.
No, this is the first one that I can remember.
And do we need to talk about the size of the new trees at all, or they also change as...
They're, you know, I think you've already had it before, so most of the, the screen trees are 12 to 14. fourteens and then the procedures are going to be, we're going to have to help with some of the other symmetries. Some of the ornamentals are smaller, but they're, they're going to be smaller trees.
All right, great. Any other? Yes?
Yeah, I just have a question about how the house presents from, from the street, since it's twice the size of, it's going to be much higher than the current house. And since I'm not a professional, so I don't understand, when you say you're raising, it may at least from the sidewalk, it sounded like you were raising the house up.
Yeah.
And then raising even the entrance to the house up higher. So all of that increases the ultimate height. And, you know, from the street, looking at it, you're like, whoa. Especially since you have this parking court right in front. So you see the driveway and then this, you know, lawn of cement and then this allocated house. If I could also just ask the architect, how tall or how high are the ceilings in the basement?
I believe we worked those out to be about nine foot four.
Because I know in other houses on Sylvan Lane, where we also dealt with the height, one of the recommendations of the board was to bring that down to eight and eight feet, which is still a significant height for people to live in. And that knocks off a couple of feet right there.
So, so this is the house here and is the existing house. So we're significantly back at the existing house. The ridge for the, our house is, is just below five feet, it's like four point eight feet.
The what, I'm sorry?
The ridge height is about four point eight feet.
I'm sorry, what is the ridge height?
That's the maximum behind the roof.
Oh, okay.
That's about four point eight feet above the existing house, but we're also further back. The first floor is the one that we were talking about. The first floor is about almost three feet higher than the existing first floor because of, because of the ground war. So then we, then you add on another one point eight feet to get us to the ridge.
I don't want to take up the board's time, but you have to raise it that much because of the ground war?
Yeah.
And so, but the current house didn't have to be raised, or were they getting floods?
Yeah. We have a lot of water now, I think.
In the basement?
Yeah.
So you have to raise it so you can make the basement?
Yes.
Except how do you do a nine and a half foot basement? I mean, deep, deep basement with such a high water table? Are you using like a special hydraulic cement or something down there to keep it from turning to some?
Is that nine foot four floor to ceiling?
Yeah.
Floor to ceiling or floor to floor?
Slab to, this is basement slab to, you know, clear, clear ceiling space then.
Really? That is pretty tall.
We typically do, yeah, we typically go.
It's about the height of this room.
Typically do ten, yes. So after you put your ductwork in and, and break it down, it maintains an eight foot ceiling.
Well, that's what I was asking, floor to ceiling.
Yeah, the ceilings will, will fluctuate, but at certain points to fit in the ductwork will be down at eight feet.
I mean, his question is, it's a, it's a, it's a good question. You know, you could take off six inches or so, and I don't know if you really feel that in the house, but you might, it might make a difference in the way it looks from the street. I mean, it's worth considering.
You did actually.
But it's, it's not actually clear, it's duct. We have, the, the TOC is, is two oh two two and the basement slab's one ninety-three. So we're at, we're at nine point two feet to the top of foundation, so then your ductwork's going to put it below that. So we're below eight feet, I mean, below nine feet with the ceiling height.
Well, that's.
Yeah.
But the ductwork doesn't run continuously, so if you're going to be talking about.
Yeah, so you're about, you're about a nine foot ceiling now on average for the areas doing other ductwork, and then you're probably eight and a half.
Also, the pine trees in the front of the house are very, very tall. So it's not like they're short trees and our house is going to be sticking out over the pine trees. They're towering pines. And the house is going to be set further back.
Well, and you're also planting for suggestion, bringing in, yes, with that driveway, so you don't get that straight shot up there.
Are any of the trees in the front of the house now going to be cut down?
There's, there's three trees coming out, but they're all adjacent to the septic up here. So all this, this whole buffer over here, it's all staying. It's actually going to get better, because those invasive species that are in there right now, they're going to get removed. And Karen's putting a bunch of native species shrubs in there as well, so it's going to look a lot better. Right now it just, it's overgrown with all that invasive species.
Right, right. I understand. I guess my, again, my thought was from the curb, just as you're even going by, even though it's set back, it's set back, but it's also set back behind a, is the parking court going to be cement or stone or?
As right now, we have it as asphalt.
Yeah. So you have this look of a lot of driveway and then this house coming up. That, that's the only thing.
Well, I think those curves, actually the street curves, so you can't see the house straight on.
So the, the only section of the additional driveway we're looking at, because if you can, as, as Karen had mentioned, here's the existing driveway right here. And so that comes right up to the existing house, so that's a section. So this is the only additional pavement that we're putting in there. That's, that's basically where the existing house is. Other than that, it's exactly.
So the house, where the house is, it's going to be paved?
Yeah.
Well, that's a big paved area.
Well, it's, this is, this is, I think it's thirty-five by thirty-five. The part of the cipher here is that to actually see the house straight on, you've got, you've got actually a barrier of trees, so you won't actually see the house directly.
Well, what you're going to see actually from the street is, is the one-story garage for the most part. And then, but it's, you're by the house before you walk out. So I, I don't know, I, I think if, if they pull in the landscaping, the way you were talking about, to close that gap a little bit, you just, you're, you're just going to get a peek through at the, at the three-car garage, whereas in the, with the existing house, you're getting a peek through to the entire house.
Or.
Well, the garage, the one-story garage.
It's two-story. It's two-story.
That's two-story?
But it's not two-story.
It's technically like a one and a half, it's like a table.
Okay, it's one point.
And the body of the house is, you know, we're talking about the actual pint, but the E1, which is held by the roof all the way across the front, above, is a parade up there, it's about two or three.
It's a problem.
No, my name is.
The ridge line then receives back.
Just wondering.
Turning into a fountain.
Just wanted everybody to know.
So the walkways on the sides, are there one walkway on the sides that cut back to the pool area, is that what's, was taken out?
Yeah, we took it out.
Yeah, it's just, it's just the lawn. So there's no light in the lawn. It's just a lawn.
That's a good answer.
Listen, the lights go out in ten minutes. We still have two more hearings. And, 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 and an informal conversation. So we, we're going to have to stop talking about this project right now. Let me make the suggestion. In ten minutes, the lights go out. We've got, we have, we have no written decision for this one, correct?
Correct.
But we have one for Thirty-Six Pine Street, which is, hasn't even, they haven't even talked to us yet.
Right.
We've got one for Thirty-Four Old Colony. We have the, the issue on One Twenty-One Rolling Lane to talk about. We have lighting changes at Two Fifty-Three Meadow Brook. And then we have an exploratory discussion for Two Seventy-Five, Two Seventy-Seven North Avenue. That's all on this agenda, and the lights go out in ten minutes. Okay? I don't think we're going to be able to cover those things tonight. What do you suggest?
Well, the, the ladder to, the two, Thirty-Four Old Colony and One Twenty-One Rolling Lane, you have decisions.
Yeah. We're not going to be able to get to them tonight, Betsy. We have ten minutes.
Well, can either continue everything to second or third?
Can I speak? I'm Thirty-Four Old Colony, I was deferred two weeks ago.
Yeah.
I mean, this has become a hardship, like moving, like moving my family, my children.
Yeah, I, I understand, I just.
No, I, I understand it too.
It's ten, it's ten minutes at twelve.
But, I agree, but something's been expressed through the process tonight, from presentation to decision. And the only reason I got continued is because of the looming challenge. So I think there's something out of order here. It was, it's pretty straightforward. And I know everybody's important, I, I understand that.
This is what we're going to have to do. We're going to have to schedule another meeting. We're going to have to, right before September, exactly.
In fact, next week.
In fact, next week. We're going to have to. There's nothing else.
In all this case, if we do just three, exactly.
That's right. Is there any, or any, do any of these require four, Betsy?
No.
So what I would suggest is, and I apologize for making everybody sit for hours and then running up on the, on midnight. And it's, I'm really sorry. We just got sandbagged tonight. We could, we will take a look at Thirty-Six Pine Street.
Well, I'm willing, if there's something urgent, if we can do it next week, I'm willing to do it next week.
Yeah, nobody wants to wait until, until September, I understand.
So I, if someone else, like the gentleman in the back that has a small issue, I don't, I'm willing to go to next week.
All right. One Twenty-One Rolling Lane, can we, can we put that, that off until next week? We just don't have time. We've got eight minutes left.
What are we talking about?
I don't know yet.
There's a hole in here.
And I'm just looking at what else, what else we have. Maybe by next week, we could also have a decision on Twenty-Four Sylvan, so we don't have to, we don't have to wait till September. So what nights would we be meeting? You're on vacation.
Yeah. But I guess I'm not.
Doing vacation, vacation. What about doing it Monday? Is there enough time? We have to advertise tomorrow. It takes forty-eight hours, right?
Right.
So the soonest we can do it is Tuesday.
No, today's Wednesday.
Oh, that's right.
It's done Thursday, it could be Monday.
It could be Monday. So why don't we, why don't we choose for Monday?
Monday's okay for me.
Monday's okay for me. So it's, it's, it's a few days. So that's, we'll do that, we'll take here Thirty-Six Pine Street on Monday, take care of One Twenty-One Rolling on, on Monday.
You want a decision for Twenty-Four Sylvan?
Twenty-Four Sylvan, we'll, we'll look at the decision on Monday. And.
And then the Old Colony you'll look at tonight?
Old Colony we'll look at tonight. All right.
And then Two Fifty-Three Meadow Brook and Two Seventy-Seven North will be Monday night.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, everyone, for your patience, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I know everybody's just sitting here for hours.
Thank you, sir. I'll check the oil for something. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Hey, how are you? So soon? So you went September. Get out of here.
Oh, Kim, is this it, really? I mean, that's that. I miss you already.
For nine, Monday? I guess, I'll ask.
I'm really glad. I took Peter for, for three or nine, but they night, they were always late.
You're really tight on the front lawn.
So this one, I guess.
With the, or.
He can be there Monday, but we'll put, we'll put Rolling Lane down closer to the end, so we can get your time. He's going to be a little, he's going to be a little, I think it will be back now. All right, so we can see Rolling at about sometime nine-ish or nine-thirty-ish. All right. Okay, all right, thanks, Joel.